So at four ten, I would like to thank tech support for getting this up and going and call this meeting of the July seventeenth Planning Commission to Order. Let's have a roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Here. Thank you. Let's all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, the first, I'd want the agenda is approval of the agenda staff. Have there been any changes to the agenda since it was published?
Chair Beau, there have been no changes to the agenda.
Thank you very much. May I get a motion for approval of the agenda? Thank you, Commissioner Trujillo. Is there a second? He did. Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Peyard. All those in favor of approval of the agenda, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Oh, so you're opposed to approval of the agenda? Thank you. Okay, that motion passes. The next item is approval of the meeting minutes. Request approval of the June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five Planning Commission meeting minutes. May I get a motion for approval? Thank you, Commissioner Pava. May I get a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner La Cruz Crawford. Let's do a roll call on approval of this agenda.
No, 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 you said agenda.
I'm sorry, I said, I said agenda accidentally, but it's approval of the minutes. Mike?
Yes.
Yes. The June eighteenth minutes are approved. First item is case twenty-five fifty ninety. Yeah, and so this, this was not unanimous, so this is, this is a case that we've already voted on, however, it was not unanimous, so this is a request to approve the final order for case twenty-five fifty ninety. May I get a motion for approval?
Mr. Chair, I move a motion of case twenty-five dash five zero nine zero for approval.
I'll second.
Thank you, and thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
No.
Now is the consent agenda. There are two items on this agenda. May I get a motion for approval of these two items, the final orders for these two items?
Yeah, I'll motion to approve both cases under the consent agenda, twenty-four fifty sixty and twenty-five fifty forty.
Mr. Chair, I second that motion.
Thank you, and thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Before we go on to new business, we had a, we had an issue at the, the last meeting where our attorney was unable to be here, and we had a few of the members not in attendance. And we moved on a case, we took an action, however, the opinion of staff at that time was legally incorrect. So Roger, I wonder if you would go through and describe kind of what had happened and, and the resolution of that. Thank you.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Give me a moment, just want to make sure we're identifying the case properly. The case in question is twenty-five dash fifty-ten. It was a Juarez request for three variances. The, the meeting was attended by five of the seven commissioners on the, on the Planning Commission. The, the variance, or the portion of the SLDC addressing variances requires a majority of the entire Planning Commission, or BCC if it were to reach that point, approve the, or vote in favor of a motion to approve a variance. The point being that variances are intended to be, you know, rare, or at least difficult to grant because of the unique circumstances, and the drafters of the ordinance didn't want a minority of anybody to, any body to be able to pass or approve a requested ordinance. That issue was in fact discussed with the applicant during last month's meeting, once staff realized that there was, that the meeting was taking place with only five commissioners, so that the applicant was aware that they would need four votes at that time, and the applicant chose to proceed rather than to table the item which was an option presented to the applicant. After the presentation of the case by staff applicant and discussion among members of the Planning Commission, a motion was made by Commissioner Bruger to deny the request for the variances. Motion was seconded, and on a vote, the motion passed by a three-two vote to, to deny the the variances. Because in, in the usual, well, I shouldn't say usual, but in the circumstance when a motion to approve a variance would be made, a vote of four members of the commission would in fact be, be necessary, and staff, staff advised the Planning Commission that four votes were necessary for that particular motion, which was incorrect under the circumstances because it was a motion to deny, a majority vote would have been sufficient, and in fact was sufficient. The, the opinion of counsel is that it was a perfectly appropriate vote, you did have a quorum present, the, the matter was called and presented properly, the, the motion was made appropriately and seconded and was voted upon, and it is counsel's opinion that that was a final and binding vote, and in fact terminated that case as, as it was before the, the Planning Commission. The discussion that followed the vote ultimately resulted in an agreement or an understanding to table the matter until the, the subsequent hearing, which would be this hearing, and between hearings, counsel notified each member of, of the Planning Commission as well as the applicant through staff's communication of, of our position that in fact the vote was appropriate and should not be ignored or, or overruled, so to speak. I did have communications from individual members of, of the Planning Commission and discussed my thinking on this, and as I said, I mean, this is very much a parliamentary issue, we don't have a county parliamentarian. You, as chair, are in position to make a determination as to the propriety of the, the vote taken and the steps at, at last month's meeting, and, and that's where things are as, as of today, as I say, the, the applicant was notified that the, that legal considers the vote to have been appropriate, but I, I do want, with that factual background and clarification, I would like for you to verify that that is your determination in essence as the parliamentarian.
Thank you very much, Roger. Before I do that, I wonder if there are any comments from any of the commissioners who either are present or not present, you've been in communication with the attorney, and Commissioner Bruger?
Thank you, Chair. First off, thank you, Mr. Priscino, for discussing the, the rationale here in this meeting for, for not pursuing with the tabling. My position, again, I, I was the one who recommended denial, but we had, we'd said, I'm not faulting the legal analysis, but we had said that this would be tabled. The applicant was present when we said that, and I think that it is appropriate to honor that tabling and to do what we said at a public meeting we were going to do, rather than what we did through this approach. At least this discussion is part of the way there, so I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners who either are present or not present and received information of this from the attorney interested in saying anything? No, that being said, I, I understand and respect your opinion, Commissioner Bruger, but I, if I'm to rule that the procedure outlined by Attorney Priscino is, is correct, then, and the variance request from that case is denied, then I agree with that, so I make that ruling if that's how you're supposed to do that. Thanks very much, and I appreciate the, the time taken to kind of clean up this, this confusion. Okay, the next item on the agenda is case number twenty-five dash fifty-twenty, Thomas Simic and Christina Mestes-Simic, conditional use permit application. Staff. Thanks, David.
Mr. Chair, Planning Commission members, before we get started, I did want to bring to your attention that a letter had been submitted by a representative of some of the neighboring people in opposition. David's going to hand that letter out, requesting a, a tabling of this hearing. The, the applicant, or the representative is here in person if you wanted to, to hear his, his request.
Thank you, and so the procedure would be to honor this request, consider, consider tabling before any discussion of it? Is that the process?
That is correct.
Just from a practical time-saving standpoint, we think it's appropriate to, before hearing the substance of the presentations, for you at least to be aware of the, the reasons for the request for tabling and make a determination as to whether you think that's appropriate. If you do, obviously, you could table the matter, but if not, then at least it would have been determined that it's appropriate to move forward with the matter on its merits.
Thank you, and this letter was in our packet if I'm, unless the content is different than the letterhead. Excuse me? Okay, thank you very much. Well, so would the presenter of this request to table, please come forward, swear, be sworn
You're correct, he is counsel and is presenting legal...
Lawyers always tell the tru... No. If, if, if we don't swear counsel in, then okay.
He's not presenting factual evidence for your consideration, so I think it's appropriate to let him pres...
Mr. Carnes, is it? Please proceed, thanks.
There we go. Thank you, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Joseph Carnes, Summer Carnes and Associates. I represent Stephen Feld, a neighbor of the proposed project, as well as a group of neighbors in opposition to this application. I submitted this letter to staff, and I communicated with staff this morning regarding the concerns that I discovered yesterday afternoon. I apologize to everyone for the last-minute nature of this, but I was carrying out a site visit yesterday, and I noticed, and if you flip through the letter, there's a photo of the public notice sign, it's the third page, and you can see that the, initially, it's the applicant's obligation to comply with the SLDC's public notice requirements. That includes posting of a public notice sign, mailing of notice to neighbors within, I think it's three hundred feet, and publishing notice of the, of the hearing in the, in a local paper, the New Mexican. You can see from the public notice sign at the bottom that the only indication of a Planning Commission meeting, it says the meeting will take place on the seventeenth day of April twenty twenty-five. There's no reference to any meeting after that, and in the letter, I'll submit to you, and, and again, this is, this is last minute, but I documented, and I provided copies, the ensuing pages are the agendas from the April seventeenth meeting, at which this application was not on it, as well as the May fifteenth meeting, the application was not on that agenda. Why was it not on those agendas? Well, it turned out it didn't go to the hearing officer until the May eighth meeting. The first Planning Commission agenda that this application was included on was the June seventeen, June eighteenth, I believe, meeting, and the last page in my letter, Exhibit C, is a memorandum from staff to this commission recommending that the item be tabled from the June eighteenth meeting, which it was. Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carnes. Just a second, staff has been saving money and they printed out the yellow sign in black and white, and it's relatively illegible, so I'd like to confirm with staff that Mr. Carnes' assertions of the date of notification is correct? I can't tell from this.
Chair Beau, Planning Commission members, yes, Mr. Carnes is correct. The dates on that board are the dates that he stated.
Thank you very much, and sorry, don't mistrust you.
And I have copies I could have handed out, that I think are better copies, but in any event, thank you, Mr. Cisneros.
Not, not a problem.
And so the applicant has three separate obligations under the code. First, to provide notice of the public hearing by first-class mail fifteen days before the hearing. Well, the first, first meeting at which this case was on the agenda was the June eighteenth meeting. There's no evidence on the record, Chair and members of the Planning Commission, that that public notice was mailed. Second of all, the posting needs to be done for that meeting. The posting nowhere indicated that the item would be heard on the June seventeenth agenda or on this agenda for that matter. And then finally, and, and also the applicant's required to demonstrate that public notice was posted in, printed in the newspaper, and Section four point six point three point five of the code says, "Written verification of the publication, a list of persons sent to mailing, and an affidavit of posting," which includes a photo of the proposed, of the posted notice, "shall be provided to the administrator prior to the public hearing." The evidence in the staff report that you've received in your packet from Mr. Ruiz dated for today's meeting supports my evidence that I submitted in my letter to the contrary. Mr. Ruiz says the applicant provided an affidavit of posting of notice of the hearing, confirming the public notice regarding the application was posted for fifteen days on the property beginning on February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. Additionally, notice of hearing was published in the Santa Fe, New Mexican on February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, as evidenced by a copy of that notice in the record. That does not satisfy the requirement, and staff has confirmed that in its staff report. I am aware that there is a lot of concern in the Canyada de los Alamos community. I'm here with my client, Mr. Feld, today. I don't know that there are any other members of the community who are concerned about sa, public safety impacts of this project who are able to be here tonight. Again, it's the applicant's obligation to comply with this SLDC requirements. The applicant has put staff and this commission in an awkward position by failing to demonstrate the mandatory requirements of the code, which bear on due process, a fair hearing process. We're in the process, I've been working on this case for only a relatively short time, we're trying to engage the community and make sure that their concerns are heard by this commission. They're not here today. Why? Because they did not receive reasonable or effective notice in compliance with the code, and the simple fact of the matter is the applicant hasn't complied, has not demonstrated compliance with their obligations, and staff has confirmed that in the memo. So with all due respect, I request that the item be tabled so that the community can receive proper notice of this important application that affects their public safety and their concerns about public safety and other issues. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Carnes. A, a question of staff or the attorney, and that is, if, what is the earliest time that the applicant would be able to meet the notice requirements if they were able to do all the required steps? I'm just wondering, table until when?
If I may, so it's a fifteen-day requirement, so it would be the August meeting? That would give them sufficient time to comply with their obligations.
Chair Beau, Planning Commission members, that is correct. It would be able to make the August meeting.
I will be unable to make the August meeting, so, and, and that might raise one of the same issues we had last meeting with, you know, the, again, in order to approve, I'm imagining a conditional use permit has the same...
No.
Oh, it does not? Okay.
No, it does not.
Got it. So if, if the commission is interested in table, well, first of all, I wonder if any of the other commissioners have questions of either the Attorney Carnes or, or staff on this issue?
Sure, I got one.
Chair, Chair Beau, Planning Commission members, just to give you guys a little history of, of what happened, so the hearing officer meeting was scheduled for, for March, as Mr. Carnes indicated. It was tabled in March and then tabled again in April due to deficiencies in the actual submittal package, then went forward in May. When it went forward in May, the original scheduled date of April for Planning Commission was not, there was no table identified because it hadn't even gone to hearing officers, so staff didn't think it was necessary to put a table letter or put it on the agenda for that April Planning Commission meeting. And so that's a little bit of what happened there and why it did not get noticed on that April Planning Commission meeting date.
Thank you. Any, any commissioners have any questions, or, Commissioner Trujillo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So staff, if, on the, there's three burdens, as I understood, to meet, and one of them is first-class mail by the people that are filing the application, and I thought I heard three hundred and fifty feet away from the place of the conditional use permit being requested, so is that correct?
Chair Beau, Planning Commissioner Trujillo, so it's actually five hundred feet within the, the property itself.
Okay, so, so Mr. Chair and Dominic, is, is, how many residents were identified in this conditional use permit? in this conditional use permit that they would have to be notified? You, is it the obligation of the applicant? Or does the counties give them those, those names of, of the people they need to notify?
So it's up to the applicant to receive those names. Um, we were not required, but we offer them to go to our GIS Division or to the assessors, um, to get a list of those neighboring properties within 500 feet.
So, and Mr. Chairman and Dominic, so they, after this, they have to show proof that first-class mailing was, I know when you go mail first class, the, the mail service, UPS, I mean, US Postal Service will show proof of that. So they have to turn that into county staff, is that correct?
Chair, Beau, Planning Commission members, yes, that is correct.
Okay, and has, and to your knowledge, Mr. Chair, has that been, has that been met?
Chair, Beau, Planning Commission members, so what's identified in, in the exhibits that I am noticing now is the, are the letters that were sent out for the neighborhood meeting, which is a requirement of a CUP as well. We are trying to locate the mailings, um, for the actual hearing itself. Um, we're going to check with the case manager to see if he has those in his file.
So, Mr. Chair, in, in this first-class notification has to give the date of the, of, of the Planning Commission meeting, is that correct?
Chair, Beau, Planning Commissioner Trujillo, can you repeat the question?
So i- in the first-class mailing that, that the applicants are obligated to send out, it has to state the date of the, that the meeting will take place?
That is correct.
Okay, and Mr. Chair and Dominic, on this far as the mailing or the proof to the New Mexican, that has to be submitted in the package as well? Is that typically how that works?
Chair, Beau, Planning Commission members, yes, that is correct.
Okay, and then the third burden, just so I understand correctly, is that this sign that's, that's put up here, the applicant gets this sign from the county itself? Or does the county itself go and place the sign at the property?
The applicant picks up the sign. So the staff is, uh, provides the information and the sign to the applicant.
And so the dates on this sign that's posted, because I was, are, are of what date?
I believe it was the hearing officer March and Planning Commission April. I don't have the exact dates on hand, but it was hearing officer March, Planning Commission April.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Bruger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of questions for Mr. Carnes. So, um, is there any other substantive information which would impact on this case that we don't have in front of us now?
Um, Chair, Beau, Commissioner, the community may well have information and would like the opportunity to present it to this commission. There have been previous letters, I understand, before I got involved in this case, at the neighborhood meeting and the hearing officer meeting, there were a number of me, members of the community, I think it listed 15 in the, uh, in the minutes. Anyway, there were people present able to express concerns to the hearing officer. They're not here tonight. I submit because they did not receive notice of either the June 18th meeting or this meeting. And so that is information. And then the one other item, sir, is that I submitted a separate letter that may be in your packet. I think you got handed out about, it's a substantive matter. I don't want to get into it very far, but there's been no traffic analysis done on, on this project. Traffic safety is a big issue, and so that is information that we think needs to be fleshed out in order to provide for compliance with the SLDC, and it's not at this time. So those two items, absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner, Commissioner Bruger?
I may continue. So the letter, Mr. Carnes, that we have in your packet says that it speaks for 22 neighbors who object in the strongest possible terms, and it goes on in great detail what those concerns are. So again, are there any individuals that you know of that, beyond the 22, that may have been, uh, you know, would have liked to weigh in? That did not get the chance?
Um, Chair, Commissioner, I, I don't know where the reference to 22 members comes from. That's not my, from my letter, I don't think.
Commissioner Bruger? Commissioner Bruger, if I could, I understand where you're going. And, and my understanding is there is a statutory requirement to publish. Um, and so irrespective of what you may learn or what you may not learn, if that statutory requirement to publish has not been met, then it may be the will of the commission to table. So I, I just don't want to drive down that road. If you could. Um, any other questions of commissioners?
I have just general, because I'm just trying more just out of my own curiosity and stuff, so, to staff. Um, so, because I do see in the exhibits as far as, um, notice that was done, so the legal notice, et cetera, there, there is, you know, like a newspaper, a legal article that I guess was ran in February 26th and April 25th. Um, there's certification of posting, uh, in February 25th as well. And all this documentation, right, that shows the mailings and the certified mailing receipts, et cetera, and stuff. So I'm just curious, because obviously what I'm hearing is that, um, this was supposed to be heard, like, you know, a while back, but it wasn't, right? But it wasn't tabled properly. But they, you know, obviously the applicant did go through this process back then, is what I'm seeing with respect to the exhibit. So is, how does that process work where, you know, in this type of situation where, um, it didn't go to a meeting? But they had previously sent out these mailing notices, et cetera? Do they, are required to do so again because of the fact that the hearing wasn't set? Does that make sense?
Chair, Beau, Planning Commission members, so typically the, the tabling would hold the date, um, so no new re-noticing, you know, would be required typically. Uh, this is a little bit of a different circumstance where the April 17th meeting, um, you know, came before the actual March or the actual May hearing officer date that the, the project was actually, or the case was actually heard on. Um, if the Planning Commission decides to, to table, then all re-noticing would be required.
Just briefly?
Hold on, hold on.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, one, one question, Dominic. If we were to move to table, do we table until a date uncertain? Um, until all the conditions of notice are met? Or do we assume that those conditions of notice will be met between now and, uh, and let's say August 20th?
Yes, uh, Chair, Beau, Planning Commission members, it could be tabled for the August 20th date. Um, we would require the applicant to provide us with the, we'd give the applicant the proper notification to send to the New Mexican, as well as for the mailing, and we would require them to send that back to staff, all the, um, verifications of those.
And then it would be pulled from that agenda if those requirements were not met? Or would we go through the same exercise again?
So if they don't meet those dates, uh, we wouldn't even put it on the agenda. Um, so we would verify, before we put that on the actual agenda, we would verify if those actual dates were met.
Thank you very much, and, and sorry, Mr. Carnes.
Thank you, just, just one last point in response to the commissioner's question. There are two separate requirements for mailings. One was for the pu- for the pre-application neighborhood meeting. That's what's in your packet. There were letters sent out for that. That was, I think, in February. There's a separate, as Mr. Cisneros mentioned, it's a separate obligation to send out mailings, a second set of mailings regarding the Planning Commission meeting. There's no information in your packet that those letters were sent out for any meeting. And I understand staff was looking for those letters. I don't know if they were found, but they're not in your packet. So that second obligation was not met. And from my perspective, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir. What's the will of the commission?
Mr. Chair, uh, the applicants are here. It might, would you be willing to have their end of the story? Or that, you don't think that's necessary?
So if, if the applicants are able to present their case?
They want to, well, well, present the facts, not their case, but the facts to the tabling motion.
I, I see, I see that as a, as a, you know, walking on a knife edge. I, I just don't think that's a...
Sure, the only thing I'll comment I'll make, Mr. Chair, is that, and look, I did look at the letters that were sent out. And so the 500 feet, they did mail, it looks like about 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12, maybe 13 or 14, 13. And looking on Google Maps, at only 500 feet, they probably only were required to do two or three mailings. So they did a lot of things in good faith here, but that's just a comment. But I respect your decision and we'll make a motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Pava?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, in light of what's been brought forward to us by Mr. Carnes, I, I would say that I would love to hear, since there's such interest in this, I would love to hear it based on its merits and not on a technical procedural consideration. And therefore, I would certainly be in favor of tabling it so that advertising and notification is done, uh, to, to address the concerns of Mr. Carnes and his client.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Pava. Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I may make a motion to table, uh, this case until the August meeting if the applicants meet their requirements.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Commissioner Trujillo and a second from Commissioner Pava. Um, can we take a roll call, please?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. So, uh, this item is tabled. I apologize to those who got in their car, found parking, came down here, but it's a beautiful evening. Um, and so, and, and those online. Um, we, we want to make sure that th- this case is presented without any flaws. If there are flaws that can be challenged, um, then this is not over. So we want to make sure that when the commission makes a decision, it is a decision that is in compliance with all requirements. So, uh, thank you very much, and, and again, apologize for the inconvenience of visiting beautiful downtown Santa Fe on a Thursday night. Thanks. Yeah, yeah. Okay, uh, thanks, y'all. And again, apologize to anybody online who, um, who took the time to connect. And, um, this case will be heard in the future. The next item, case 255050, has been tabled. And next, we have petitions from the floor. I don't see any people on the floor. Matters from the commission. Any, anything? Commissioner Bruger?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Uh, just a general thing, but, um, when there's a request of staff that, um, sometimes when cases come up that's within an overlay district and the overlay relates to the community plan that had been done before, it would be nice to, uh, if, if the authors or, or folks most knowledgeable about the community plan were either present or could speak to that, or, not that you're not, but just, you know, that, um, I think it would be helpful because plans drive the codes. So, uh, it would be, uh, or, or there's a reference in, uh, um, the staff packet that, uh, refers to maybe an element of the community plan that was done. And, uh, I would have brought something up in this case, uh, but I'll wait till a month, but that's the general comment.
Thanks, commissioners. Any, any other matters from the commission? Commissioner Pava?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, this is addressed to staff. Uh, I, you may know, I also sit on the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, and so you know that they are looking at, um, funding for a study regarding land use assumptions as relates to capital improvements. My request would be, as that evolves, uh, that the Planning Commission, uh, be briefed on that and be able to provide input on land use assumptions as certainly part of our purview set up by statute and by ordinance.
Thank you, Commissioner Pava. Commissioner?
Um, I, I was recently, as part of our Homeland Association, I saw, um, when somebody buys a new property or a parcel, they have to, they get the, um, short-term rental agreement that, you know, they read and they have to sign off. And I thought at that point, it would be good to have something in that document that says, "Make sure all of the buildings on the property are permitted." You know, and that might help cut that off because it, you know, it's part of that form that they have to sign, that they've read it, they understand it. And that would be a really good thing since we see so many of those, uh, come in.
Can I get some clarity? So if I were to buy a property in Santa Fe County proper, one of the things I get from the county before closing on that deal is something said, "Here are the requirements of short-term rentals." And it does not include a, "Make sure you're, you've got a proper permitting."
No, it's, it's just the, you know, certification process, what, what they'd have to go to if they're planning on, uh, you know, getting a short-term rental. And I thought, because I actually talked to a couple of realtors and they said, "Well, that's not our thing." And I said, "Well, it kind of is your thing because you're, you know, advertising this property as is, and some of those parts, you know, buildings weren't permitted." So if they have to read the short-term rental agreement and the first thing that says, "Make sure, check with the county to make sure all your par-, you know, your buildings are permitted," I think that would really help.
Yeah, I, that's a shock that it's not there. The number of times we've, we've had these cases come up. So I completely agree. Any other items from commissioners? I'd like to talk to staff after, just about kind of technical stuff. Um, but are there any things from the attorney?
Nothing to add this, this evening. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
And any items from staff?
Mr. Chair, Planning Commission, uh, Planning Commission members, no, there's nothing from staff at this time.
Okay, and then next regularly scheduled meeting, I thought it was the 20th, is it 21st? Yeah, um, is scheduled for August 21. And I will be, yeah, I, I will not be able to be here. I'll be somewhere, um, else. And so let's get a motion to adjourn, please. Thank you, Commissioner. Any, anyone else want to leave? Thank you. All in favor? I, okay, we're done, thanks.